And think about it. According to the legal advisor, we have our own policies within this panel. And another matter is the credibility of the secretary, which should not be dealt with this, which should not be dealt with this panel. The integrity is not something that should be dealt with by this panel. What we have in the past, past motions that ask someone to step down. I think the interpretation of the legal advisor should be based on the tradition of the Lashco, should be in line with the convention of Lashco. But now, I think it seems that we're not following the convention. Please look at the records. I'm sure this happened in the past as well. That is, asking secretary to step down. According to the legal advice, I ruled that this matter should not be discussed any further. Legal advisor, I want to have a written reply because this may be subject to judicial review. So I asked for a written reply. This is really outrageous. Speakers of mic. Please make a record. I don't accept it. All right, it will be recorded. Let's move on. Please make a record. I do not agree with the, with the advise of the legal advisor. And I express my dissatisfaction to the chairman's ruling. Chairman, I respect your ruling. You made an excellent ruling. Now, this matter is not related to our discussion item. And the secretariat of the Lashco has not supplied any paper on this matter as to how we should make a decision. So I support your decision, chairman. I just want to raise a question, chairman. For the clerk and the chairman, your good self, have you told the legal advisor about land planning issues? Now, we're talking about NENT land planning issues. And the motion is also about a smooth operation of the Development Bureau. Now, all these matters are related to the operation of the Development Bureau in NENT. I don't know if the legal advisor is clear about this background. I read out, what the secretary read out the statement, which is related to integrity and interest. The legal advisor completely disregarded the discussion of this meeting in giving us this piece of advice. So he's completely wrong and our rights as legislators is completely taken away. Chairman, will you consider suspending the meeting for 10 minutes and discuss the details with the legal advisor? Now, with this current ruling, I'm worried that this may affect the credibility of Lashco. We are here to discuss items related to development. I think playing different roles, this is, I think, chairman, you have already made a ruling. Right, I have already made a ruling. Mr. Chen Kim Po and Ms. Ho. Chairman, I support your ruling. Wait, you should take up the legal advice by legal advisor. You should follow it. And the legislator can't ask for a second ruling after we have got the legal advice. And secondly, we have already overrun. Ms. Ho. At the beginning, the secretary read out a statement about his integrity. You allowed him to do so at this panel. So legislators should be allowed to respond to that. And this response is in the form of a motion. If you do not allow it, you might have just as well not allowed the secretary read out his statement. In the past, there were digressions from discussion items and it was allowed. Chairman, you, this happened in the past. If you do not allow this motion, it will be digressing from our convention. And how come you do not allow legislator to respond, but you allow the secretary to make a response? Mr. Leng. Paul Chen made a statement, which is in relation to conflict of interest. If he hadn't made the statement, he could not have carried on with his duties. That's why. In coming here, it is really about integrity. Mr. Chen knows this is a matter of integrity. And he can't give us an answer on integrity. And in the motion, we urge him to step down. It doesn't read Paul Chen should be overthrown. We're, we just urge him to step down. If the motion can't be allowed, then we might just as well close down this panel. All right, let's stop. You can do that through other channels. If you think I'm not right, you can come to me. Now, the legal advice is not very clear and we don't have a written copy here. And your ruling is controversial. Still, you made a ruling already. And you said we can revisit this matter. We have another meeting this Thursday. So legal advisor and secretariat can you give us your view clearly? That is, your views and your advice to the chairman, which the chairman accepted. So with that, we can follow up on this matter on Thursday. Now, the two pieces of papers applied by the secretary is not, two-page paper statement is not sufficient. So I hope we can revisit this matter on Thursday. Now, our legislator can challenge your ruling and he can move a motion of no confidence. But still, I want to have a look at the legal advice first so that we can discuss it on Thursday. Or if I made a mistake, I can't escape from it. All right. Mr. Ip. Ms. Ip, you go first. Oh, chairman, I think the most important thing is that you have already made a ruling. So we should stop discussion on this matter. Otherwise, it's just meaningless for you to make this ruling. And for the legal advice, we are in our panel meeting and we are here to discuss policies. But this motion is about urging the secretary to step down. It is not within our terms of reference. Mr. Chen. First of all, I asked the legal advisor to give us the written reply before the next meeting and before we end this item. All right, well, can anyone repeat what the legal advisor had said? So may I ask the legal advisor to say once again what the legal advice is before we end this item? I haven't heard her advice. What's the advice? Why is the motion not in relation to our panel discussion? All right, legal advisor, why don't you give the advice now? Thank you, chairman. The legal advisor gave to the chairman is that, is on whether the motion is in line with the ROP and it is a matter for the chairman to decide. It's binding. It's not binding. It's not binding. It's up to the legislators to give views. Our terms of reference is related to government's policy. If the chairman is of the view the motion is related to policy, then we can vote on the motion. If not, if the chairman rules this is just about the integrity of the secretary and it's not related to policy, then, well, I'm sure you know that the chairman already gave a ruling. How come this motion is not related to policy? Chairman, I think you are wrong in interpreting the legal advice. The legal advisor asked you to give a ruling as to whether the wordings of the motion is related to policy. The legal advisor has not said that this motion is not related to policy. Well, this is about integrity. It's written here. No, chairman, please read it carefully. I wrote it very carefully. So that in relation to land planning issues, public lost interest in Paul Chen, lost confidence in Paul Chen, to ensure the smooth operation of Development Bureau and to restore public confidence in the Development Bureau. These are the points in the motion. I don't want to wrongly put the blame on the legal advisor. His advice is clear and I agree with him. The motion should be, we should see whether the motion is related to policy. But the legal advisor has not said that this motion is not related to policy. Chairman, you said, the legal advisor said the motion is not related to policy and that's why you made a ruling in accordance with his advice. But this is not what the legal advisor has said just now. We have to be fair. This is about integrity, right? Now, integrity is directly related to the operation of the policy. All right, order. We can follow up. But now, I'm afraid we have to move on to item two. Which is about proposed enhancement to general excursia compensation and rehousing arrangements for development clearance exercises. Let's ask the officials to come in.
Welcome officials attending for this item. Could I ask the officials to introduce the paper? Who will do that? DS, are you going to walk us through the paper? Thank you, chairman. The paper introduces to members enhancements to general excursia compensation and rehousing for development clearance exercises. We will have the general excursia compensation and rehousing arrangements. In view of the work in the past few years in relation to clearance and rehousing and in line with that experience, we have reviewed the arrangements and we are introducing a series of improvements. I like to emphasize that today, we are mostly talking about the land and the occupiers, if there is a structure on the land. And we would call these usually licensed or registered squatter structure and the excursia payment payable. If there is statutory resumption of land and the statutory compensation to the title owner, that is something quite separate. Today, we are talking about general excursia compensation. And this does not include farmers whose land is cleared. That kind of EGA is separate from what we are discussing today. I hope members are clear about this. Next, can I ask the director of lands to let you know our proposals after the review? D of lands, as the DS said. One point is important. Recently, we are always talking about NENT and that there would be special compensation payable for NENT. What I'm going to introduce now will apply to all clearance and land resumption projects underway. Later on, we'll have to come to the finance committee to seek funding support. And when we come back in October to apply for funding, we hope there will be a retrospective effect because the paper was issued on the 15th of July. If there is still clearance or land resumption done after the 15th of July and if the persons involved have not left the piece of land concerned, then my proposal now will apply. We have reviewed a series of EGA and we would like to do something to adjust four types of EGAs. This is in paper five, A, B, C, and D. The first three have to do with licensed structures or squatters. Here, let me explain a little what we mean by licensed structure. We mean those covered by licenses issued by the administration in 1982 or before. Small houses could be built under those licenses. And another type had to do with 1982 and 1983. In that year, we registered all the structures in, or squatters in Hong Kong and each one was given a number. So 5A to C have to do with this kind of structures. Now, what are the improvements first? Those with registered numbers and with licenses and which had been approved for occupying by people. When there is clearance, only those registered under the 1984-85 squatter occupancy survey or the licensee would receive compensation. But we are proposing that in future, as long as those people are in these structures and before clearance, they would have had 10 years of residence in such structures, they would be eligible for compensation. So the threshold has been relaxed and more such permitted occupiers would receive the EGA. Secondly, also improvement to such occupied structures. And this has to do with the dollar amount. Right now, the basis for calculating the amount is for renting comparable structure in the open market and we multiply it by a period of three years. That is, the rent value for three years for renting comparable structure in the open market. And later on, we are going to make use of a six-year period. In other words, an eligible person will be given compensation according to the per-square-meter value. And that is, if they rent comparable structure in the same district, then whatever he would pay for a six-year period would be the compensation amount. In other words, there would be an enhancement in the dollar amount. I can give you an example. If today we are talking about a structure of about 40 square meters, we're talking about a squatter. If it is cleared today, the registered occupier will get compensation to the tune of about $200,000. Later on, the excursia payment would be near $400,000 and that is for a 40-square-meter unit. Just now, we said that the residence period would also come into question if they are the registered occupier in the 1984-85 SOS. They would be able to get this amount. And if they live for a longer period, they will, of course, get the full amount. But then, if they do not live for that number of years, they will have their amount adjusted. Now, let me talk about 5B, the domestic removal allowance or DRA. It is now also only applicable to the registered occupiers of squatters. If the structure was registered just for storage instead of for domestic purposes, then the occupiers will not get any DRA if the structure is cleared today. But now, we propose that for this type of structures, as long as it has been formally registered, even if its use is non-domestic, the occupier concerned before the clearance registration, if he has occupied the structure for two years or more, then we would hope to pay the DRA to that occupier as well. At present, the DRA is subject to annual adjustment and is calculated on the basis of the household size. The policy intent is that more people should be included in the threshold. And we also propose that the DRA can be paid out to people involved in 5A. That is, even if they have the EGA for permitted occupiers, the same people can also receive DRA because this is really for removal. 5A is about giving them an amount so that they can rent other accommodation. Next, 5C, EGA for shops, workshops, etc. The operators' allowance. At the same time, we are talking about licensed structures and the license was issued for the operation of shops and workshops, etc. Today, the arrangement is that we only recognize the 1982 licenses and those issued before 1982. If they are or have been issued after 1982, then the present arrangement is that the relevant operators will not get the allowance. But today, we are proposing that even for licenses issued after 1982, if the undertakings could be linked to the licensed activity in the license, then we would hope that the EGA could also be paid out to such operators. Again, this is calculated on the basis of the area in square meters. So the operators, whether they operate shops or workshops, etc., they could find alternative accommodation and also to compensate for his loss of income in the interim. So we actually recognize more licenses. In relation to this EGA, there is a second arrangement. We would be boosting the amount. Just now, I said that we would allow them to enjoy the allowance at a certain rent value. Now, for shops, it is calculated on the basis of four months and workshops, 12 months. Later on, we hope that we will add three to either category, three months to either category. In other words, seven months for shops, 15 months for workshops. The last one, 5D. EGA for the clearance of graves, camptabs, and shrines. The first direction is to extend the coverage. Today, such EGA is only for indigenous villagers. Later on, we propose to extend these to those belonging to non-indigenous villages, provided that they have been in existence before the 1st of July, 1983. In other words, if projects involve land resumption and these are affected. The main consideration is based on the burial policies between HAB and the lands department. If regarding burial on mountains or hills, if they had been done before 1983, we tolerate them. We do not clear them at the moment. Since we tolerate such graves, camptabs, and shrines, and if these are affected by projects after the proposal is in place, then the people involved should enjoy the allowance. And on the other hand, very often when graves are cleared, in the majority of cases, we have to pay the additional allowance of Feng Shui significance. Even if some graves are not subject to Feng Shui consideration, sometimes they have to conduct some religious rites. And now, we are looking at each case on the individual merits. But later on, since in the majority cases, we have to do this, we want to streamline the procedures and we would have an across-the-board arrangement. That is, whenever we have this kind of clearance, we would always provide the additional allowance of Feng Shui significance or Feng Shui religious significance. Lastly, in terms of rehousing arrangement, we are going to provide some flexibility to affected people. Right now, when people are subject to asset and income limit when rehousing is concerned, that will stay. But then today, if the people involved are eligible and they choose to be rehoused in PRH, then we are not going to dish out the 5A EGA. In other words, if they choose rehousing in PRH, they will not get that EGA. But we are proposing that in future, these people would still have a choice. And that is, they can choose rehousing or the EGA. Of course, if they offer the EGA, then they cannot apply for PRH in two years' time. This is really to give them more choice. And as I said at the beginning, such changes, hopefully, can be supported by the FC when Lashco resumes after the summer break. Also, that there could be a retrospective period dating back to the 15th of July. I think I'll stop there. Thank you. Thank you very much. Members' questions? Four minutes each, including the reply from administration. Fernando Jung. Mr. Jung. Thank you, chairman. With regard to these enhanced compensation for clearance and resumption and rehousing arrangements, we understand that this paper proposes relaxation and the allowances will be increased. I certainly welcome that because very often, the clearies would have been there for a long time. Now, you ask people to have at least a 10-year residence period. I think the amounts should indeed be relaxed. But chairman, the question now is not just about the allowances, but when you make plans for a certain site and people living on that site, including farmers and villagers, have to wait a long time for the allowance. In the interim, because of such EGA, there is a chance for residents to be evicted and landowners may have their land resumed by hook or by crook. I mean, people want to purchase the land, but landowners may not have all the information they need to understand the situation. So chairman, we are really talking about non-owners, basically. Some of them operate shops there. When the administration indicates an intention to make plans for a certain site, if you really want
if you really want to provide compensation meaningfully to these people, you should do a snapshot survey right there so that, um, when you announce the plans and then residents might be evicted, I don't want that to happen. And actually, those who really suffer a loss cannot get the compensation. I hope the administration will give some careful thought to that. So hopefully, uh, you can give me an answer. And secondly, we understand that with regard to Huan Yun Wei and Liang Tang, uh, I believe you are following this approach. But there are other conditions. For example, if the person involved owns other property and if, uh, his or her family members are already rehoused in P R H, then the allowance or compensation would not be paid out to these people. I hope you can explain these details to us. Uh, are there strings attached so people concerned will not be able to get the E G As? Uh, any response? Chairman, on the first question, when we will do the survey to freeze the population? Now, very often, when the administration announces intention to develop a piece of land and then we actually do the planning and then to trigger the land resumption process, sometimes this can span over up to twenty years. The present registration or survey is such that when the boundary of the project is fixed, when we have to gazet it or announce it, then we do the so-called freezing survey because it would be nearer to the development time. If we do the freezing survey ten, twenty years before development, um, the population can still change in profile. And if the owner enters into other tenancies in a lawful way with the tenants and if, uh, sufficient notice is given, the administration cannot prevent this from happening because we allow different tenancies to be entered into. So we would still stick to doing the freezing survey nearer to the time because or else there could be confusion. And, and then people who get the compensation might be people who do not actually live there and, uh, the calculation of the allowance can become quite complicated as a result.
Regarding, uh, Han Liang, well, uh, we have special arrangements for the squatters. Well, uh, that's comparable to the arrangements proposed for N D N T. Some of the proposals I just mentioned are new. You have something to add?
Um, Doctor Zheng asked about the eligibility for, uh, E P, E G A P O. In Annex Three, uh, C, uh, we have the requirement that, uh, the person concerned must not own any property and, uh, if he is already rehoused, uh, he will also not be eligible. These two will continue to apply because the, um, E G A for permitted occupiers is meant for, uh, providing, uh, rehousing compensation for such occupiers, for those that own either property or is already rehoused in P R H. We believe, uh, he doesn't have the need for rehousing. So, uh, he will not be eligible for E J for permitted occupiers. Okay, Mister K K Feng.
Well, I am very worried about E P, E G A for permitted occupiers. Think, uh, they can, uh, choose between P R H or secondary H O S. I think, uh, that's the, uh, most controversial part involving a lot of interests. Have you considered, uh, the practice in nineteen eighties? Uh, when, uh, squatters were to be cleared? Well, they, uh, surveyed both the occupiers and the structures because the whole exercise could, uh, last for more than a decade. By so doing, you can, uh, reduce controversies in the future. Because, uh, after a survey, the actual clearance may take place after twenty years. So, uh, you have, uh, to ensure that they are registered and they have to, uh, be living there for two years at least. It may not be easy, uh, to find the evidence to support that. I think, uh, for instance, on the first of June, uh, nineteen eighty-two, if you were living there, then you will be eligible. It's very difficult for you to trace back, uh, so many years. So please, uh, register the occupiers as well as the structures. And would there be a five-year rolling period? The plan, uh, the timeframe is twenty years, but some squatters, uh, might be cleared, uh, five years afterwards, six years or seven years. So it would be good if you have a ten- or five-year rolling plan. The longer the better. If you, uh, can afford a twenty-year rolling period, all the best. If not, uh, ten years, eh, anyways, it should be no shorter than five years. So clearance, uh, will take place, um, at least five, six years from now. So you should have a rolling period. Okay, the earlier, the better. My third question, would there be any adjustment and raise? Now is four hundred thousand. In future, it will be adjusted according to the market, uh, value or according to inflation? Or there might be a similar clearance in the urban areas? Will the same system apply? Thank you. Anyone? Yes.
This is Lin. Uh, K K, Mister K K Feng asked whether we would, uh, register both the occupier and the structure. That's correct. We will only accept squatters registered in the nineteen eighty-two, eighty-two survey or those, uh, licensed before nineteen eighty-two. In the past, we only recognized occupiers uh, registered, uh, uh, as at nineteen ninety-four, nineteen eighty-five. But now, so long as at the point of survey, uh, the person has been living there for continuous, a period of ten years, will also be eligible, although the rates would be adjusted correspondingly. Regarding, uh, during the survey and registration in phases. Now, for large-scale development projects, it's quite, uh, natural that, uh, the development will be in phases. So long as we know the boundary of land resumption, we will activate the, uh, pre-clearance survey as soon as possible. The adjustment mechanism, we do have it. Uh, for the E G As or allowances I mentioned just now, uh, the mechanism enforced now was approved by Legco Finance Committee, who will follow the adjustment mechanism. If, uh, the allowance packed to rent, for instance, uh, the, um, um, occupier, the, uh, the, um, E G A for permitted occupiers will, uh, adjust the rate according to the approved mechanism. What about, uh, clearance exercise in the urban areas? The same will apply. Regardless of the location of clearance, so long as, uh, the, um, compensation and housing arrangements involved, the same system will apply. Mister Bicheng.
I don't know anyone, whether anyone from our research division can help us. Please compare the, uh, current proposals with, uh, our previous arrangements so that we can see the difference. It is difficult to, uh, know the difference between the old and new systems. If we have a table, it may be useful. And I have a suggestion on the handling of such matters. In the past, compensation of clearance exercises involve two things. First, uh, the money itself, the amount itself is important. There will be upward adjustment in these proposals. So people affected, uh, would be, uh, treated less unreasonably as it was in the past. And then the question is the time. For Choy Yun Village, although, uh, the rate has been in- increased, but because of the time gap, uh, the people affected were rather angry. Whether it be urban renewal or P R H redevelopment or land resumption, we ask for this fundamental policy that is rehousing before clearance and rehousing in situ is the best. And we have, uh, been, uh, arguing over this point for more than two decades. So whether it be, uh, N Y N T or Kutong, Hongshui Qiu, N T As, this involves, uh, the work of the lands department and the development bureau. Perhaps it has to be, uh, overseen by the C S four A. Can you really provide rehousing before clearance? If such a policy is established, uh, future confrontations will be greatly reduced. If you provide a site for villagers to, uh, relocate their village, you, you have to provide the land first. The Choy Yun Village is an example. Even before land was available for, uh, removal of the village and, uh, the, um, uh, right to use the, uh, access road, uh, they were asked to, to move and it was so unfair.
Miss Lin. Mister Chen asked for a table, a comparison table. In fact, we have prepared one at Annex C of our paper. I hope the comparison, uh, is useful for Mister Chen's reference. Mister Chen referred to the amount of compensation, saying that, uh, we, uh, do not, um, uh, track too closely, close enough, uh, the, uh, date of clearance. In fact, uh, we have already made an adjustment. Now, we use the date of, uh, the pre-clearance survey as the cut-off date and we use, uh, that, uh, date for calculating the prevailing rate. And usually such rates are adjusted on a half yearly or annual basis. Uh, we want to, um, uh, to, uh, apply the rate closer to the date of clearance or resumption of, and of gazette. So six months before the, um, if the clearance is about six months, uh, um, from the gazette, then the current rate will apply. And as for rehousing before clearance, the usual practice now is to discuss with the persons affected. Uh, we will discuss with them so that they can have the, uh, allowance to, uh, find, uh, alternative, uh, housing for locations. So we will try to, uh, make them to, to keep, um, clearance close to rehousing.
Well, if you do not establish such a policy, it is difficult. If you just say as far as possible, it's not good enough. Yes, Annex C is a good chart, but I'd like to know what is the actual amount involved. It would be better if, uh, you have, uh, the money terms included.
Please provide the information after the meeting. All right. Mister Long Kwah Hong.
Yes, rehousing before clearance is very reasonable. People affected will then have, uh, their entitlements or, uh, clearly defined. It's not difficult to identify land for rehousing because many developers own farmland. They, uh, wait for you to announce a development plan to take action. So you can tell these people, if you do not, uh, resume farming in fellow land, you have, uh, to, uh, hand it back to me in a year. So there are people who cannot find land for farming and there are developers who are holding farmland. Well, you're, the government, it's easy for you to identify land. If you want to, uh, develop a certain, uh, plot in three years' time, you, uh, tell the, uh, tell a developer holding farmland nearby that if you do not restore farming within a year, I will recover the land because it's a waste of land resources if you hold farmland and don't farm it. If you want to ensure the farmers have farmland, then we should go for fellow farmland. Actually, they are not fi- fellow, they are farmland, but developers are, are waiting for, uh, the chance of redevelopment by paying a premium. And, uh, you've always said that, uh, you have, uh, to track market value when it comes to paying amount of premium. Is it really impossible, uh, to have rehousing first before clearance? I think it is possible. You target the people who hold so much farmland. If they do not, uh, use the land actively for farming and tell them that, well, in Hong Kong, we need farming and, uh, we need farmland for farming. Uh, yes, there are some changes in the new proposals. In the past, it was outranges. Let me quote an example. You are not responsible for housing development. If you apply for P R H or H O S, all right, you, uh, declare your income or assets at the point of, uh, application. And by the time, uh, allocation is done, you have to de- declare your income and assets again. And if you exceed the income limit, oh, sorry, you won't be eligible. Uh, a friend of mine begged his spouse not to give him a paywa- rise, otherwise he will not be eligible for P R H. So you should have the same treatment. When you dish out benefits or welfare to, uh, benefits to, uh, people, you should adopt the same standard. And if you consider building, uh, your land reserved in the N T, have you considered resuming some farmland, uh, for, uh, future use? Because it's not possible for people to have farmland. And like, uh, in the case of Choy Yun, uh, Village, they didn't have a road to use. Were you aware of that? Were you aware of that difficulty facing the Choy Yun villages when the village, uh, was relocated? And have you reviewed the arrangement?
Mister Chen, uh, if I may respond to Mister Long's questions. First, the resumption of farmland. Our usual practice is we have to act according to our statutory powers in resuming land for, uh, development of public purposes, uh, for the construction of roads, for public works, uh, for infrastructure and also, uh, new, uh, new towns' development. In these circumstances, we will resume private farmland in accordance with our land resumption ordinance. As regards whether we've made special arrangements when it comes to, uh, farming. In, uh, N Y N T, N T As, we have, uh, proposed a special, uh, restoration of farming, uh, plan to help affected farmers, how they can be relocated. In Kutong, we have identified suitable plots. Uh, we will, uh, proactively match, uh, land and the farmers, hoping that they can, uh, restore their farming there. Anyone in the first round? Anyone more in the first round? Mister Wu Chiwei? Thank you, Chairman. The biggest problem in, uh, N T development is the government's farming policy. However, this paper silence on this. According to the Undersecretary, the government would only... the government would only uh help to match land and prospective farmers. If you look at the case of Choy Yun Village, in the matching process, a lot of difficulties were encountered. That was a painful experience. For our people who have adopted uh farming as a part of their lives, they won't accept yours, your 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 claim that there is no problem in relocation or in matching. All right. When it comes to uh matching, why are you so confident that once a plot is uh zoned A R G, uh the owner is always happy to uh rent the uh land, to rent out the land for agriculture? Because in the past, you have seen many cases. Such land has been leased for containers, storage, and even uh for uh warehouses, so and so forth. So why are you so confident that under the new arrangement, you can certainly, the matching uh arrangement will always work? And for land, under the land resumption ordinance, to resume an agricultural plot for farming? Is there any um is there any difficulty uh in in terms of jurisprudence making it affecting your consideration? I thank Mister Wu for your questions. Now, we talk about the general compensation and rehousing arrangements. This uh paper doesn't cover excitation allowance for um active farmers. So however, I'll briefly respond to Mister Wu's questions. Under our uh farming restoration program, usually the A F C D will see whether uh any uh owner of uh farmland is willing to uh lea- to rent out or to sell his lot to uh farmers. If yes, then uh the farmers can approach these people for negotiations. And usually, A F C D will proactively identify sites in Kootong. And uh the department will approach these landowners proactively.
In terms of planning, we consider whether the land is zoned as A R G and whether the land is intended for agricultural use in future. And if the landowner is not going to rent out or sell the land for agricultural use, there's no choice for him. And if there is any unlawful development, there will be laws to control that. As for the laws related to agricultural policy, well, this is about agricultural policy really. And where the development bureau, we don't have any direction at present. Mister Chen Yun Han. I understand the reply. Today, we're talking about compensation. E G A. Some villagers are affected by the project and so they are eligible to compensation. Compensation includes rehousing as well. Now, for indigenous villagers, you can't move them. Will they get treatment that is similar to people living in Ngao Chi Wan Village? Sub Sam Hong. That means will they be relocated in Situ? So apart from cash compensation for indigenous villagers like the chairman, if they are relocated to other areas like Longfu Beach, will they get another village? And have you considered giving them another village? So my secretary is to the permanent secretary. Thank you. Thank you, Ms Chen, for the question. We're here to brief members on the revised treatment to squatter occupiers and that also covers shop operators on the squatter land. A brief answer, please. Have you considered my proposal? Ms Chen mentioned the issue with indigenous villagers and that treatment, should they be affected? Now, we don't have any proposal to change the treatment at present. Now, in the past, the indigenous villagers get another village. For example, in Kootong, there are indigenous villagers. They have land title. In the past, I worked with Kowloon City residents, the villagers, and these people got the relocation treatment. What about these people in uh N E N T? I visited N E N T and the villagers told me that they would not be affected. That is, the indigenous villagers would not be affected. Is that the case? That's my question. And is there a policy regarding this? Chairman, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. You are from N T two. Chairman, let me take the question and give an explanation. Let's say, now if there are indigenous villagers within the N D N T boundary, the existing relocation of village for indigenous people is also applicable. But for our project in this case, there's no villages, no indigenous villagers in this matter. The Kootong Village is not an indigenous village. And there are households who are living in small house. They are indigenous villagers. In compensation for them, we will build a house for them in the relocation policy. On the other hand, there are squatters living within the boundary and there are also licensed squatters. And these people, for these people, the treatment for indigenous villagers do not apply. Now, there are different kinds of indigenous villagers. When John Chung was the bureau head, we discussed the relocation of whole village. And so we are left with the current situation. For Kootong, where there are indigenous villagers, whose village may be demolished, what will happen? Will there be another village, Kootong Village, relocated? Will this happen in N T because it happened in Ngao Chi Wan Village? Different kinds of people are living within the boundary. Yes, I understand that. For squatters, let's say they get the two hundred thousand compensation. And these people apply building a hut for agricultural use nearby. They may cluster and live in the nearby area, but the government will not purchase private land or allocate a piece of private land for them to be relocated in Situ. No, no, that's not right. I've followed up on such matters, say, for a long time. For example, in Taiham Village and Ngao Chi Wan Village. I learned from all books. Now, um certain villagers were relocated to Saikong. And I met with the village heads, the village chiefs. I understand your point. I understand that different kinds of people are living in the same village, that indigenous uh villagers and non-indigenous villagers. So will the two officials talk to the chairman? If you're still not clear about it, I can tell you what happened in the relocation of Sub Sam Village. The treatment then was very different from what you're proposing now. So I just don't understand how come I'm hearing something different from the past treatment to the villagers. Thank you. Thank you, Ms Chen, for the proposal. As far as we know, Kootong Village is not an indigenous village as the director has explained. Indigenous villagers affected will be relocated in Situ. Yes, I understand that. There will be a relocation of indigenous village. Now, the crux of the matter is that for Kootong Village, as far as we know, it is not an indigenous village. So the current proposal is not applicable. For individual indigenous villagers whose houses are affected by the project, there will be relocation of village for these people. As for the whole village, we don't have any plans for the relocation of the whole village. Ms Alice Mack. To identify land for development, we have to have proper rehousing for villagers, indigenous or not, properly. If not, you will encounter lots of objection. And this is already happening in N E N T. Now, for the compensation package is for the residents in the area. In the past, say, for example, many years ago in Chengi, when the slipways were supposed to be relocated, when the fishermen from these uh slipways, they were asked to be relocated. On the one hand, they are relocated to public housing. On the other hand, there is another village for these people. Now, another recent example I can give you is Ma Wan. I don't know if the administration can consider this. Now, the relocation in Ma Wan was not conducted by the administration, but in any event, it was a kind of reconstruction of the whole village. So a block is given to indigenous and non-indigenous people. Or there is a house-for-house exchange. Now, this may not be carried out by the administration, but you can always make reference with this. In compensation, we're not just talking about money, talking about cash. We have to address the housing need and the villagers may want to keep the rural way of life. So it's better for you to build another village for these people and this proposal is, will be more acceptable to the villagers. Yes, it's worth considering. Director. Ma Wan. Ms Mack, you are right because the pro- the Ma Wan relocation was carried out by private developer. And the many cases quoted by Ms Chen. Well, I will come back to Ms Mack and Ms Chen to get the information they supplied just now so we can have a look at the details. Some villages can be relocated because of certain background. Maybe the village would is an indigenous village, which is different from the Kootong Village. All right, second round. You can keep your question for the second round. Doctor Fernando Cheng. Thank you, Chairman. Now, for the compensation package, from the time of planning to the time when compensation is given, we're talking about long period. During this period, many people will be relocated. So may I urge you to conduct an early survey so that the affected clearies will have a chance to get reasonable compensation and they will not be forced out. And you can also prevent people from abusing this system. That means you can prevent people from moving in because they know there will be compensation. Early survey will prevent the occurrences of these abuse. Now, the director said that it is difficult for her to take up this suggestion. Now, in that case, are there other plans to prevent clearies from being driven away? And in the sense, they stand to lose more if they're driven away. And some farmers ask for resumption of farming. But you haven't got any, but there's no mentioning of resumption of farming and the compensation related to that. Now, you propose identifying land or ask the farmers to identify land and they should negotiate with the landlords. I don't think it's something you can call a plan. Are there any plans for relocation of village? Just like the Choy Yun Village incident. Deputy Secretary. Let me take question concerning relocation of village and resumption of farming. For clearies in N T, there will be relocation of village if the village is an indigenous village for squatters or licensed huts. These are non-indigenous village. There will be E G A for the people and there will be rehousing as well. Taking into consideration, the squatters do not hold the land title. So our major concern is to rehouse the residents. For situation in N E N T, we reserve certain P R H flats for the squatters affected. If they're eligible for P R H flats, there will be relocation in Situ. And we will also work with the housing authority to identify land, uh identify P R H flats in Shengshui Fan Ling so that we can relocate those affected clearies in the two districts. Resumption of farming. Any farmers renting a plot for farming at present? Should they be affected by development? And should the plot be resumed as a result? Then there will be E G A for farmers under existing practice. On the other hand, the farmers can also identify a farming plot for and rent the plot under the A F C D practice. And in doing so, he can get assistance from A F C D. All right, thank you.
We still have Hongshui Q coming up. Ms. Chen.
Oh, we just have a very short period. I understand that you have a hard, difficult task, Chairman. But I just want to say a few lines to follow up. I hope the two officials will explain. In the village, there are indigenous people, non-indigenous people, and some other kinds of people. If anyone asks to have reconstruction of the village, will there be plans for these people? In the past, I understand there were. Now, you say to the farmers that they can go to Kutung South for farming to, to take. But I visited the area. The land is fenced off by developers. How can people farm there? If the indigenous people and non-indigenous people go there, you have to do something for them. And we're talking about a project that affects thou, a thousand people. So you have to have proper plans for them. You have to have plans. You may say they can go to Kutung South and Chiu Hang, Chiu King. The area, the land is good, but the, the land is in the hands of the developers. So you have to help the farmers.
Thank you, thank you for the question. Let me take the first question. Let me answer it first. Kutung Village is not an indigenous village. Squatters, residents, occupiers, they don't have a license, they don't have the title. There is no relocation of village for these people. Deputy Secretary. If indigenous people ask for relocation of village, what's the policy? If in a village, individual indigenous villager get compensation by, in the sense that the government will locate land to build a small house for them, or they can build a small house in another area out of their own pocket. But this only applies to non, not to indigenous villager.
I have already stopped. I understand what you're saying. But why is it that in the past you put a village there? There are indigenous villagers there. You should not be drawing a line like that. You say there are not indigenous villagers, but then they have been there for a few generations. What are you going to do for them? They need to continue their living. They have been there for a few generations, even if they are not indigenous. If you segregate them like that, it's just like what Ms. Alice Mack says. The land developers have thought about that in Ma Wan. Why can't you do the same thing? This will take you out of the present gridlock. I'm telling you, the administration, only by so doing can you wriggle out of this gridlock. I have been there a few times. You must provide some room for flexibility. Chairman, I'd like to stress something. The F T U is of the view that N E N T should develop. However, in the process, you cannot step on the interest of the original stakeholders. I understand it is difficult. I think there needs not be a response. Okay, I'd like to ask a question. According to what I know, when there is clearance and rehousing, there is a policy for indigenous villagers. And that is to give them some room for discussion. There is such a mechanism. But then, for non-indigenous villagers, you ask them to demolish their structures. And we haven't heard that there could be a review. I'd like to ask the administration whether you intend to conduct a review for such people and such structures. Do you intend to conduct a review? Chairman. Is that a question? On non-indigenous villagers.
Yes, uh, just tell me the statutory justifications. Thank you, Chairman, for the question. Let me take the opportunity also to respond to Ms. Chen.
We really have to draw a line somewhere under the law. And also, with regard to land ownership and the structures on the land, it, that is very clear for indigenous villagers. But we are talking about another type of people on farmland or on government land. Uh, there has been the building of illegal structures, and they have been occupied. That is a fact. And in nineteen eighty-two, we did a territory-wide survey and registration on such structures. Some of them hold licenses issued by the administration before that. But we must stress that these squatters and licensed huts do not include any element of title or ownership. Our policy is, if there should be development, such squatters and licensed huts have been tolerated. And we said clearly that if necessary, if development should take place in the future, such uh, structures would have to be demolished when the land is resumed. Policy-wise, what we can do is to help such occupiers or operators of businesses and offer some rehousing compensation, but not title or compensation for title or ownership. I think we have to be clear about that. Uh, let them finish answering the question first. Just one word, Chairman. You asked about non-indigenous households. There are two types. Uh, the D S covered one type, uh, those are the squatter occupiers. In fact, there is another type whereby there is a statutory lease for those structures. And we would give them the allowance for seeking rehousing in the private market, which is equal to a value of some accommodation with seven years um, age in, in the vicinity. This would apply to non-indigenous villagers as well.
You talk about illegal, illegal structures, but I think you are unfair. They have been licensed. You gave them a license. So they are occupying the squatter legally. You should not say they are illegal structures, right? In the past, in the seventies, they would pay a ten-year license fee, and then they would have the right to apply for permanent housing. But you froze that policy. It is no longer implemented. I think the administration should treat these people the same as indigenous villagers. And that is, you subject the system to review every half a year, whether, to see whether it is in line with the times. You should factor in inflation, et cetera. This year, it should be six hundred thousand, but no longer so, ten years down the road. You have to factor in inflation. Have you done it? Six hundred thousand applied to Choyun Chin villages, but three odd years have passed, and the amount would have deflated. I think you should, uh, calculate the difference. You shouldn't say it is that amount this year and the same amount ten years later. Will you consider or think about reviewing the system? Do you have intention to review the system?
Chairman. Let me clarify something. I am talking about structures which are squatters on government land or private land. As for licensed structures, they are under a separate category. But the general principle is usually, squatters will not be able to get re-provisioning allowance. As to whether there would be a review, today, we are proposing to relax the E G As. This is actually part of the review, and our primary consideration is that with regard to squatters and licensed huts, when they are cleared, we believe the E G As could be enhanced. And that is from a thirty-six-month rent value, uh, for that to go up to seventy-two-month rent value. We believe this is an appropriate E G A arrangement for the occupiers. These squatters actually do not involve any title or ownership. And I think we have to strike a balance. With regard to the rational use of public money, we believe the enhanced E G A would represent some improvement to the situation. Mr. Albert Chen.
The D S is just reiterating the stance of the administration. He has not responded to the views of many members, including those from F T U, the chairman, Long Hair, and myself. And that is clearance first and then rehousing later. All these years, many steps have been taken, especially with the introduction of the E G A. The re-provisioning expenses have actually been included. So if you would just mildly adjust your policy. Just now, Mr. La Wang Fat said something. I believe Ms. Chen, Ms. Mack, Long Hair, and myself, I think we have the same spirit and same direction uh, making that proposal to you. So basically, whether it be a squatter or a licensed hut, as long as you are subject to clearance and land resumption, if they want to put up or build another licensed hut, or they would like to re-provision their farmland, like those people in Choyun Chin, the X R L Hong Kong section would cost sixty-six point nine billion dollars. And you know, Choyun Chin is just a small plot of land. However, you did a bad job, so there was such controversy. The same would apply to N E N T and the same, I would say, for Hongshui Q. Many members are proposing to you that in Ma Wan, there has not been such a problem, because the private developer forked out the money to deal with the licensed huts and also the fishermen. And they gave people land in exchange, and it solved a lot of the re-provisioning problems. Now, of course, some of the licensed huts are still a problem. But then, you can learn from that example when you do land resumption for new town development, like in N E N T and Hongshui Q. Your attitude towards, and also your policy for squatters and licensed tasks should be changed. Basically, you have the money there. Just learn from Ma Wan and also the removal of villages for indigenous villagers. You may want to look for government land, because the reciting or re-provisioning cost is already there. I already told the administration much early on that they should find a site for Choyun Chin to be recited to. And I was, uh, telling the officials that then. In fact, you can just take one more step, and a lot of the land resumption, clearance, and rehousing problems will disappear. What we are proposing is already done on the mainland. You should not be so calcified. You should not just limit this to indigenous villagers and pay money to other people. Just take one more step, solve the problem. And then there will be an end to these controversies and struggles against land resumption.
D S. I believe I'd like to clarify a few points. First of all, these, uh, squatters and structure, or licensed huts, uh, and these occupiers, we have said that there will be some E G As. I'm not talking about money with you. I'm talking about land administration. The Choyun Chin example is a case in point. I don't want you to repeat your mistakes. Now, we are telling you to learn from the Ma Wan development mode. Now, I think we have to clarify that our policy is that these squatters. I know your policy very well. I absolutely am clear about your policy. I'm telling you, your policy is not dealing with the problem, and you are making a lot of people angry. D S, the member is proposing to the administration for it to consider that you can do more, because times have changed. We're asking you whether your policy will be changed. They're asking you to consider it. I think the member has a point. You are saying that you are caring government, you want to share benefits with the people. But then there are people who don't get the benefits. Mr. Po Chen gets all the benefits, said Mr. Albert Chen.
Chairman, could you please allow us to state our response first? Secondly, as the director of lands, our policy towards the squatters is that ever since the freezing survey in nineteen eighty-two, our policy is that the squatters should at first not be there to start with. So there are already voices that the administration should step up enforcement against such squatters, especially with regard to those which have been expanded or, um, turned into subdivided flats. And people are asking us to strengthen our law enforcement. Now, we are allowing occupiers to be reasonably rehoused. There is such a system. But for the squatter policy, I think we, we need to strike a balance. Or else, does it mean that as long as people can squatter on some land and put up a structure, then these people will automatically have the right to be given another piece of land for the building of another structure? That would involve another problem, and that is land use planning. The fact remains that if Hong Kong has to continue to develop, our land resources would remain precious. What we can see now is that land for development, as we see it, uh, a lot of it does have such squatters and structures on them. If we are saying the squatters have to be kept or re-provisioned. No, the D S is, has misunderstood me. I'm not saying they should be preserved. There are many different kinds of squatters, some on government land, some on private farmland. Some squatters are quite nicely built, and they also occupy some farmland. You talk about subdivided flats. Uh, nine out of ten of those occupiers would be happy to be rehoused in P R H. But some of the so-called squatters have been occupied by generations of people, and they also, um, use some farmland in the vicinity. We know there are different kinds. We know the aspirations of the different types of residents. I'm just talking about those who would like to resume farming. I'm very clear in my proposal. I'm just saying that you should make the right policy administrative arrangements for them. Because financially speaking, under your new E G A, to a certain extent, uh, it would already be enough for them to find land to resume farming. But this is not allowed under your policy and administrative arrangement. Just look at our painful experience. And I'm just asking you to make one more step and do minor adjustments to your policy. That is a view for your consideration. If you are always fair, there will not be any opposition. In the past, you sought to develop the N T. I believe there are at least half a million people living in these structures. There will be a big impact. The administration should review the policy. You should not have to have people threaten suicide before you agree to review your policy. You did not touch upon N T farmland, so people did not say anything, because people would be living hap- happily. Now you meddle with people's accommodation, that is why they oppose you. You must conduct a comprehensive review on the policy. Ms. Chan Yun Han.
Chairman, you have taken the words out of my mouth. I think I agree with you, Chairman, that we support NENT development. But you are not talking a small piece of land. You are talking about NENT and then NTN and then Hongshui Q. You are going to develop all land in the NT. But you face different types of stakeholders. DS, what you just said does not work. You say I take down your structure, but you want a piece of land. But have you ever heard of adverse possession? Look at Pui Man Village. They are still very angry. They have been chased away by you, but then they have been there since the end of the Second World War. And you must think about this for NT residents. You did not do a good job in clearing villages. And the chairman, myself, and some other members would like to stress. The FTU supports NENT. So look at things from this angle. However, you have to tackle the conflicts attending this development. You understand? This is not my style. I'm trying to be relaxed and smiling when I talk to you. Listen to us. You are dealing with NENT and then later on NTN and then Hongshui Q. If I have been there for one or three generations, I think you want to do more for us. Don't run away from the problems. I agree with the chairman that about half a million people are affected.
I hope that the administration can open up their mind and don't regard it as the opposition. We want as you proceed with your development, you can strike a balance. I've asked the administration a number of times. I've visited the NT a few times. I went with Matt May Kuhn to Hongshui Q. We are not saying simply that we oppose you. No. We're asking you to address the problems as you develop the area. Now, Director. Please. How you deal with people who have lived there for generations. I'm not talking about those who have lived there just for eight years or ten years. But you must have new measures. I think the chairman has put it very correctly. Do you have any new thinking? In fact, Chairman, I support you. I think you've made a very good summary. We all want Hong Kong to develop. However, you have to address the wish of stakeholders. Otherwise, there will be a lot of voices and this we don't want to see. Alright. I think we have ready, this is already the end of our scheduled time. I'll draw a line after Dr. Fernando Jung. And regarding the next item, Hongshui Q and DA, I don't think we have time for that. We defer to the next meeting. Dr. Fernando Jung, thank you.
In fact, these are important issues. We must have enough time to discuss these important issues. I support your arrangement, Chairman. Regarding what you said just now, Chairman. Compensation to non-indigenous villages, there should be an a review, a full review of such arrangements. You've made a very fair remarks, Chairman. For so many years, they called them licensed structures. So they've already grandfathered their existence. The government has accepted that their existence is legal. And people are living there, farming there for generations, some of them legally. So you call them illegal occupation. This is so unfair. And to eradicate them this way, you should consider the following principles in rehousing. First, rehousing before clearance. Second, institute relocation of the same village. And also arrangement of resuming farming resumption and also maintaining their lifestyle. That is, if you are to to remove a village, you have to preserve the regional lifestyle and to ensure that it can continue farming. If you do not review such things, if you do not consider these issues. And you have to bear in mind that after you've announced that a certain area is under planning and the fact that villages are subject to so much nuisance, and if you don't take this into account, you will face struggles and confrontation. And they will not budge from the position of no removal and no demolition. So Chairman, I agree with what you said. We don't really have enough members here for me to move a motion. I just want to put on record, I hope that the administration has heard us clearly. If there is no review of this arrangement, there will be no end of such confrontations and struggles. Any response from the administration? Well, we've heard Dr. Jung's remarks. I believe we have to end our meeting now because time's up. And for the remaining agenda, we'll defer to our next meeting. Thank you, government representatives, for your presence to answer members' questions. Thank you very much.